18th, 2018, Town Council Meeting. It's the best part of our entire Town Council Meeting, and frankly, the best time of my entire month, when we get to honor the students, who are our Students' Citizens of the Month. We're really proud of every single one of you, and thank you, parents, and a special thank you to those teachers and administrators. Will those teachers and administrators please stand for us so we can recognize you? You know, this is one of those times that they come on their own free time, or what's left of their free time, and this is special that you came today. So, thank you again for supporting and for nominating. It's important to all of us that you're doing that. We, like most of the schools in the town of Gilbert, recognize the pillars of character, and this month's pillar of the month is trustworthiness. Oh, thanks. I got Valerie doing my clicker right there, so we were sending each other eye signals. We have two great sponsors for this. Raise your hand if you've ever been to Sal's Gilbert Pizza. Oh, yeah. I've been to Sal's a few too many times, because it's right across the street from Town Hall, but we're grateful for them. Great community partners, support our police and firefighters on a very regular basis, and our student citizens, so thank you. And also Nitro Live, where they mix science and ice cream. And that seems like the best way to do science, if you ask me. So, we're grateful for Nitro Live and the Vander Mullen family who support that effort. Okay, so we've honored our teachers, and in this bucket, I guess we'll call it, is all the names of the teachers who submitted a name to be honored tonight. So, I need a helper. This little guy looks like a good helper. Would you mind helping me really quick? It's not hard, I promise. And the Vice Mayor, she doesn't bite, so we're good. Okay, will you pick a name out of this bucket for us? And if you don't pick your own teacher's name, I'm sure she'll still give you good grades. Do you see what that says? Mrs. Lame from Coronado Elementary School. Is Mrs. Lame here? Did I say it right? Okay, come on down. I'm gonna give this to that awesome teacher. We have a gift card for you, so thank you so much for being here and supporting. Thanks, good job. Wait, I didn't get your name. Come back.
I'm Charlie.
Charlie, you rocked it. Good job. All right. I'm really proud to be here with our council. Our Vice Mayor, Bridget Peterson. We have our Councilmember, Jordan Ray. Councilmember Victor Peterson, just coming down. Councilmember Scott Anderson. Councilmember Eddie Cook. And Councilmember Jared Taylor. We do this pretty efficiently and in three groups. So, the first group is anyone in elementary school between Ashlyn Ranch and Islands Elementary. So, if your elementary school starts with an A all the way to an I, and you're our honoree, we want you to come on down and stand over here with Councilmember Ray. Come on down. You're gonna show the rest of the group how to do this, too. Parents, I also want to introduce you to Lauren Oxford. I almost called you Lauren Conrad again. Lauren Oxford. Lauren is part of our digital team. She is taking good professional pictures that will be up on both Facebook and on Flickr. I always forget which one. Flickr, tonight. And you're also welcome to come down when it's your child's turn. And this is the best area for that photo, so no need to make a mad dash. We'll definitely wait, and if you're sitting somewhere else, we'll try to turn and wave to you, too. So, make sure all the kids get the good photo that they want for their scrapbooks, right? Because we all still scrapbook. All right. Without further ado, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. We're starting this evening with Kali Yanni Kemp from Bridges Elementary School. Next, and we owe Emerson a little apology because her name was omitted from the program this evening, Emerson Josten from Burke Elementary. There they are. Yeah, Jen did, yeah. And we have Andrew Rudin from Carroll Ray Ranch. Don't forget, parents, it's okay to come down behind Lauren and take photos if you'd like to. Lorenzo Cordova from Centennial Elementary. Charles Hefel from Chaparral Elementary. Kenna Davidson from Charlotte Patterson Elementary. Logan Mackey from Crays Greenfield Lutheran. Over here, Logan, there we go. Reagan McKinsey from Coronado Elementary. Avery Hadley from Eduprise School. Lucy Bandura from Finley Farms Elementary. Gabriel Sabz from Gateway Point Elementary. Julian Romero from Gilbert Elementary. Tyler Aston from Higley Traditional Academy. Jidam Hall from Houston Elementary. Did I say your name correctly? Jidam? Jidam Hall. Jidam Hall from Houston Elementary. Scarlett Olson from Islands Elementary. It's the last one.
That does conclude Group 1. Group 2 is the rest of our elementary school students. And we understand, since it's still a school night and we just got off of fall break, if you need to leave after your child gets their award, we totally understand. So, we'll do a little transition here, and then when it's quiet again, we'll start the Group 2. Thanks.
I voted against it every time. Just twice, for the parking and then... I guess I... yeah, I was there for the original. 2012, October of 2012. We did the parking agreement before that and then the CUP, October of 2012. It was a 4-2 vote. Yep, it was a 4-2 vote, and I was one of the two that voted against it. I didn't think it meant the findings. I didn't think that it meant two of the findings. I actually went back and rewatched it the other day. I just told it it doesn't mean it.
And you know that's a thing...
Are we good?
The thing that's...
I've been here a long time.
Group 2, we have... Uh-oh. Xavier Perez, Leading Edge Academy. Bella's next.
Zanowski? I think it's just probably Zanowski. I bet you don't even do the CHR. It's probably just Zanowski. I won't even say it.
Next, we have... Sorry, we're talking about names up here. Bella Yu from Neely Traditional Academy. Sorry for the delay, Bella. I love your sweater, says "Be Unique." Next, I'm not even gonna attempt your last name. Mason from Patterson Elementary School. And if you could tell us how to... Krzanowski? Kr... Krzanowski. Mason Krzanowski from Patterson Elementary. Can only do so much here. Isabella Couch from Pioneer Elementary. Caitlin Chow from Playa del Rey Elementary. Caitlin? Caitlin, tell the mayor how to pronounce your name, please. Chua. I was gonna say that, too. Caitlin Chua from Playa del Rey Elementary. Zoe Bella Rose from Power Ranch.
Is E-I... Is this Steeler style?
Oh, cute. Addison Steele from Quartz Hill Elementary. She's like, "I'm not sure where to look. Look at all these cameras." I'm watching her eyes go back and forth. Enoch Follett from Riggs Elementary. Teeth, teeth, teeth. Teeth, teeth. He's giggling. Candace Montoya from Settlers Point. Teacher? Donovan Bo Raire from Sonoma Ranch. And I don't know if I got that last name right. Donovan from Sonoma Ranch? No? Moving on, Chaz Hazelwood from Spectrum Elementary. Elementary School. Giovanni Valente from Town Meadows Elementary. I did Chaz Hazelwood just now. I just did Chaz Hazelwood. Oh, sorry, sorry.
Did you guys give the wrong one out? We missed Donovan. Donovan was not here. Did you give the wrong plaque to somebody? Okay.
There we go. Next is Aleah Martinez from Val Vista Lakes. And that's it, Mayor. Next, next.
Thank you, Group 2. Next is Group 3. It's all of our junior high and high school students, so come on down.
Transitioning. There we go. Okay. Samantha Lopez from Campo Verde High School. These kids. These kids are so tall. Cody Hendrickson from Canyon Valley High School. Jonah. Joshua Leonard from Cooley Middle School. Tally Thompson from Gilbert Classical Academy. Manuel Mesa from Gilbert High School. Alex Tingle from Greenfield Junior High. No Alex? No Alex. Alyssa Brienne Razzo from Higley High. Dylan Liu from Leading Edge Early College. No Dylan? No Dylan. Ariana Hernandez from Mesquite Junior High. Kalen Cervantes from Payne Junior High. Kiana Assad from Perry High School. Sophie White from Sossaman Middle School. Mackenzie Coger from South Valley Junior High.
That concludes our Students' Citizens of the Month. Thank you for being here, and we'll hope to get to do it again next month. Thanks, have a great night. Our council meeting will begin in about five minutes.
All right, we will continue our council meeting. Thank you all for, thank you to all of you who were here for our Student Citizen of the Month portion. And we are now moving on to the rest of our agenda. At this time, we will look to our council member Scott Anderson to assist us with the scouts.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think I've ever seen this many scouts here all at one time. That's great. And so the audience knows, it's always our tradition to start our meetings off with Pledge of Allegiance and we have a scout that leads that. And so we would like to invite Luke Peterson up. He's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and then we'll go from there with the rest of the scouts.
May you please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two.
It's also our tradition to have the scouts introduce themselves. So we're going to ask them to give us their name, their rank, and their troop number. And then at the same time, as we go down the line, I'm going to hand them each a copy of our Constitution, which is also something that we try to do every time with the scouts.
My name is Bryson Hioba. I'm from Troop 290 and I'm a star.
Case Roderick, I'm from Troop 290 and I'm also a star.
Andrew Mask, Troop 290, a Star Scout.
I'm Luke Peterson, I'm from Troop 290 and I'm a Star Scout.
I'm Ephraim Breddensteiner, I'm from Troop 290 and I'm also a star.
Gerald Mickelson, 290.
Joseph Mask, Troop 290.
Brandon Wormal, Troop 90.
My name is Andrew Brooks, Troop 290 and I'm First Class.
My name's Tyus Salima, I'm Troop 290 and I'm First Class.
I'm Justin Autisti, I'm a Star and Troop 290.
John Heron, Troop 290.
Kayden Engel, I'm a Life and Troop 683.
I am Orlando Rojas, I'm Troop 683 and I'm a Life.
Carl Allred, 683, 683, First Class.
Weston Taylor, I'm 683 and I'm also a First Class.
Kimble Lindahl, Troop 683, First Class.
Charlie Hall, I'm Troop 683 and I'm a First Class.
I'm Parker Duff and I'm Troop 683 and I'm First Class.
John Caffel, 683.
Doug Burnham, 683 Eagle Scout.
Steve Warhees without a shirt, but a varsity scout leader for 683.
Again, thank you to all of you for being here tonight. It's really been a pleasure. Let's give them another round of applause.
Thank you to all of our scouts and their leaders. At this time, we will have an invocation. It will be offered by the Messianic Rabbi Israel Nelson of the Beth Emanuel Congregation. Thank you for being here this evening and we invite you to the podium. And there's a mic that's attached there that'll be a good one for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor, council members. I was honored and surprised when I was asked to come and get an invocation. I didn't know what that was. And so I looked it up and there was one of two things I could either cast a spell or pray. I'm guessing it was pray. I was really pleased to be invited too. My tradition of Messianic Judaism is at the intersection of Judeo and Christian faith, Jews that believe that Jesus is the Messiah of all the world. And I was really pleased to come and pray because I'm assuming the reason I was invited is because you think something will happen. That somehow through prayer, we will be wiser and more blessed as a community here in Gilbert than if we don't pray. And so with that, I'd like to pray in the ancient language of Hebrew without any translation whatsoever. [Haiti] Blessed are you, Lord our God, King of the universe, who gives wisdom to all who ask. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your generous offer of wisdom to those who need it. We recognize that you are the God who blesses and we desperately need your blessing on our nation. That you would bring us together as a people under, under you in this country, this great country, and in our wonderful town of Gilbert. We pray these things in the name of Yeshua, which is the Hebrew name for Jesus. Amen.
Thank you. The clerk will now conduct the roll call.
Mayor Jen Daniels.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bridgette Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Eddie Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Victor Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Jared Taylor.
Here.
Mayor Daniels, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate that. We do have a couple proclamations and presentations that we'd like to make tonight. Just to note, is there anyone here on behalf of the 2018 Technical Innovation Award? Thank you, we do have one. It should have been David. We're glad it's you, David. All right, we will just note that on proclamation number three, we have went ahead and forwarded that on to the organizers of the Extra Mile Day. So they've already received that proclamation. We will begin with number one, Councilmember Ray.
Vicky, come on up. Assistant Chief Bryce, come on up. So first pass the microphone and have each one of you introduce yourself.
I'm Vicky Faber with the Gilbert Police Department Crime Prevention Unit.
Randy Bryce, I'm actually a commander, soon to be Assistant Chief. So I'll just, but I'm over some of the patrol divisions.
So Gilbert is an amazing place for lots of reasons, including being the second safest municipality in America, which is an amazing, amazing accomplishment. And a lot of that has to do with our great police officers, the men and women who risk their lives on our behalf. And personally, I'm grateful for our police officers and for all that they do. And let's give them a round of applause. The other part, or one of the other parts that makes this community such a great place and a safe place are the residents. And October is Prevention Month in the country and focuses on the importance of taking action to remain safe, protect ourselves, our families, and our community from crime. And whereas the Gilbert Police Department, in partnership with the Walmart store in San Tan Valley, have provided neighborhood leaders who commit to hosting a neighborhood event in October with a party pack filled with prevention materials, party goods, in an effort to minimize costs and encourage involvement. Whereas Red Ribbon, or Say No to Drugs Week, takes place nationally from October 23rd through the 31st and is a means to unite and take a visible stand against substance abuse in our community. Therefore, Jen Daniels and the council proclaim that the month of October as Gilbert's Gain Month and October 23rd through the 31st as Red Ribbon Week and encourage other organizations such as community groups, schools, businesses, and civic organizations to support and participate in activities that draw community attention to these issues. Without each one of you, your families, the faith groups, the businesses, and our amazing police department, we wouldn't be where we are today. So thank you to each of you. But we do give this proclamation to the police officers on behalf of the entire community and say thank you and let's make this month a safe one.
Councilmember Cook will assist us with Agenda Item 2.
Could I have our domestic violence team come up to the front? The month of October is recognized as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. It's, we're in alignment with the governor and his office and their proclamation to recognize and be aware of this tragic issue. If you have visited our downtown in Gilbert, you'll notice that the tower is lit purple so that we can recognize those families that have tragically gone through this. But this team here, and we're missing some other team members. It's Gilbert's goal to make families whole again and heal families of this particular issue. So we wear purple and all the council members are wearing purple as well, and the mayor. And again, if you go down to our downtown, you'll see that our tower is purple. Anyways, I'm going to pass the microphone to our team and they can introduce themselves and what their role is.
My name is Tina Aguilera and I'm one of the victim advocates in the Gilbert Prosecutor's Office.
My name is Danielle Dodge. I'm the paralegal in the Gilbert Prosecutor's Office.
My name is Joyce McLaren. I'm a volunteer and board member with a nonprofit called Winged Hope who help victims of domestic violence here in Gilbert.
Good evening, I'm James Newbar. I'm the town prosecutor here in the town of Gilbert.
Mark Worden, I'm a sergeant with the Gilbert Police Department. I started out with the unit when it first started three years ago and I'm currently the interim supervisor while the sergeant has been promoted to lieutenant.
And may we have a round of applause for this team and their efforts. Let me just share real briefly. Last year, we as a team put together a program which is now called Endeavor, Ending Domestic Violence Responsibly. That program has rolled out as of January of this year. So we've been at it for 10 months and I would say the success has been fantastic. And again, thank you for helping make that happen. So let me just read this proclamation of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime affecting over 4 million Americans each year of all races, ages, gender, and income levels. And whereas one in three Americans have witnessed an incident of domestic violence and whereas children that grow up in violent homes are abused and neglected at a rate higher than national average. And whereas domestic violence costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, police and court costs, shelters, foster care, sick leave, and non-productivity. And whereas Gilbert has dedicated family violence officers, police counselors, and victim advocates saving lives every day. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy services and assistance to victims. On behalf of Mayor Daniels and the town council hereby proclaim October 2018 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And again, a round of applause to our team.
Councilmember Cook has led the way in the domestic violence awareness issue, both here and also regionally through the AmeriCopa Association of Governments. So thank you for your work on this issue, Councilmember Cook. Agenda Item 4, Councilmember Taylor.
Hey, come on up here and join me. You have, oh, good, we've got, we've got a team to bring up here.
Thank you. Rick Hooker with the town of Gilbert, Brian Mercer, Mike Sutton, Raj Gupta, Ken Lowry. Please come forward. And also we have from the city of Mesa joining us Tricia Boyer. And also the city of Tempe is a part of this recognition as well.
Well, David, while, while they're coming up, I just have to remind you what, you know, they say that God only made a few perfect heads, but the rest, they put hair on. So while we're waiting for everybody else to come up. This recognition is a 2018 award to the town of Gilbert on technical innovation. And we're excited at the emphasis that our town manager, his staff have put on innovation. And every now and then I'll staff an item with David or his team and really amazed at some of the technology that's being put into the town. And it's fun to kind of brag about it to the other municipalities. I'm going to let him tell a little bit about how we qualified and earned this award, maybe introduce the team, and then we'll give them a big round of applause because we don't have an analog award. We've got some, some good technical awards here for you.
Thank you. This award is the 2018 Technical Innovation Award awarded by the American Public Works Association. That's an association of over 63 chapters in North America, all of the United States and Canada included, more than 30,000 members. The Technical Innovation Award was given to the city, the town of Gilbert, the city of Mesa, and the city of Tempe for a project we did in conjunction with one another to do an East Valley arterial travel time map. That is something, if you go on the AZ 511 website, you can look real time and see what the traffic is doing in the town of Gilbert, the city of Mesa, and the city of Tempe. It's a wonderful thing that this staff and many others worked very hard to do and to implement and we're very proud. This is an award that began in 1997 and I'm here to present it on behalf of the American Public Works Association and say thank you to the town of Gilbert, the city of Mesa, and the city of Tempe for bringing innovation into your communities.
Let's give them a big hand. Thank you very much. Appreciate all you do.
Great work. David, I miss your hard hat, the wide-brimmed one. No, our town engineer works tirelessly.
David, you have a suit and tie on. You look amazing, thank you. If I could invite down the members of our Gilbert Feeding Families Group. I see some of you right here in the front row. And anybody that's here from United Food Bank, that would be amazing. Oh, yes, thank you. For the month of September, this group participated in a food drive in the town of Gilbert. And we had representation from businesses. Our staff here at the town ran this on their own time. They were out on Saturday mornings at the farmer's market. They went and picked up boxes of food from several many locations all over the community and worked tirelessly. And I don't even have the notes here. So in monetary donations, you know what? Here, Susan Maresco ran this, so I'm going to make her present it. All right. Have to put on my glasses because I can't see anymore. So we were, we did, we worked very hard to try to end or put a dent in food insecurity within our community. Most people don't realize that Gilbert, you think, oh, Gilbert's fine. There's no one that's hungry. That is very much not true. United Food Bank provided 250,000 meals to Gilbert residents last year alone. So as a staff, we like to contribute back to United Food Bank and through the help of the community and community partners, we did fairly well this year. So none of them know what any of our numbers are. They don't know, they have no idea. So in monetary donations through different sponsorships and also through different events that we did throughout the month, we raised $12,218. I would like to recognize Ray, this is Ray. I have no idea what your last name is because I just don't remember last names. He is from Banner Etna and his, his company provided $2,500 for a sponsorship for us, which provides 12,500 meals. So we would like to thank Ray. Yeah, we'll introduce ourselves in a little bit. We also, there's a slide maybe somewhere. We had quite a few sponsors. We also had Delta Dental provide $2,500. We had Dignity Health provide $1,000. We had some local businesses that provided, Mueller provided $500. So we had great sponsorships from businesses this year, which is wonderful. We also, in food donations this year, we collected 17,038 pounds of food, which is a lot of food. We collected 9,220 pounds from one place. American Intercontinental University had a water drive. So in food donations, we have 14,198 meals that were provided by our food donations. We had a lot of community partners. We'd like to thank the Gilbert Farmer's Market. They're very generous with us in letting us have a booth free of charge to solicit the community, which always works. We had a lot of local schools help us out this year, which was new for us. We had Leading Edge Academy, Settlers Point Elementary, Bridges Elementary. And we'd also like to thank the Gilbert Chamber of Commerce. They partnered with us this year and that was a great partnership. They raised $1,100 for us. They had their businesses collect food. And so all in, all in total, we had a great drive. Last year, we collected about 29,000 meals. And I don't have the exact number, but it's, so we collected 75,000 some odd meals. So we tripled our number this year almost. So we did well. And I, I would like, I'm, let's introduce all of ourselves and then we'll give the mic to United Food Bank.
Yeah. You couldn't pronounce the last name. Ever, Evelyn. Ray Evelyn. I'm a county executive with Banner Etna. So we're pleased to be a sponsor and we look forward to participating with you in the future.
I'm Dante Scroggins with Parks and Recreation Department.
I'm Laurel with the IT Department.
I'm Linda with the IT Department.
Kathy Toki with the Gilbert Chamber of Commerce.
I'm Ravine from the United Food Bank.
Bill Warren with the United Food Bank. Sure. As a 20-year resident of Gilbert and a 17-year board member of United Food Bank, it's always a great pleasure to come to Gilbert and say thank you because it's because of people like yourself, the mayor, council members, that make fighting food insecurity easier for us. It's something that's not going away and we're not going away either. So we'll be back next year. Looking for that 75 to go to 150? Okay. All right. Thank you.
So just as, as a closing, I just, Bridget's been very, very supportive. Our vice mayor's been very, very supportive of all of our efforts. We have a few of us here, but we're about a committee of about 15. And we're all town staff and we are committed to the cause and we're just thankful for all of our support and look forward to next year. Thank you.
I think we also need to thank the Made With Love Boutique because they offered us a booth this year in their brand-new downtown Gilbert in the Heritage District for their boutique. And I just want to give a big shout out to this group because like I said, it is all staff-run in this building and the two other buildings here on this complex. And they give of their time in the evenings, on the weekends, and it is amazing to see what they do and to show up at the farmer's market. I just roll in around 8:30, 9 o'clock in the morning and they've been there since 7:00, all set up in the heat. So they deserve all the kudos for bringing this to Gilbert and for making sure it's a success every year.
Next up is communications from citizens. And our vice mayor's on her way back up. Is it the one I think it is?
Yes, it is.
All right. Well, I'll just go ahead and make the call then. Joe Guusik, would you please come to the podium? State your name. I don't need this card. He's a regular. State your name and that you are a Gilbert resident and we'll start the clock for three minutes. Thanks.
Joe Guusik, Gilbert resident. Mayor Daniels, fellow town council member, all Gilbert staff, community members, and guests of our beautiful community. As I always say, I'm the lovable, slightly annoying American. I'm the education Lorax. I come to you tonight to tell you where I stand on question one. It is absolutely yes. As I look at the seven of you, you can't deny to me that we have an absolute need. The question is, how much will we spend? So when I read the ballot proposition, it doesn't tell you you have to spend every penny. It doesn't. So what I am gonna ask you to do, as I looked at this document on both sides and read the statement, and I whispered in a few people's ears on the council and our town manager, we need to start doing financial justification. That doesn't exist here. As you know, I gave Governor Ducey a very, very brutal, hard time for not doing a time study, cost study of the entire K-12 education system. So for me to be fair to him, I need to be fair by asking you to do the same. So I want to remind you of one thing. When you sit on that dais, you are not one single person. You are one-seventh of a voice. So regardless if it's 706152433234251607, your voice must come out as a singular voice. If you don't, you're not meeting your obligation to impartially execute your duties. You're not understanding that this is a process that you must buy off on. If you don't want to be there, then don't. We have laws, we have processes, we have rules, and we must follow those. Now, it doesn't mean that your voice doesn't have, has to be silenced. As I've asked you, I will stand back up again. And by the way, even Patrick, I lived the closest to Elliot District. And I was the one who walked my dog around that building as it was being built. And it went from 18 to 28 to 36 to 42 to whatever the number is. And that gives him agita a lot of times when I bring it up. So I just want to remind you that we, we do have a need. We must justify that need, and it's not very difficult. You can tell me how much it costs you to train people other places. You can show me if I had to send somebody to Tucson or Flagstaff or some other city that had capacity, what would be that real cost to do that? So once again, I ask you to do that and I ask you to speak as one singular voice. And all of you say yes, for the sake of our firefighters who work hard for us and our police office 365 days a year, 24/7. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Just before we go into the consent calendar, I know many of you are actually here for agenda item 29. We've gotten lots and lots of emails and I want you to know, first of all, that all of the emails that have been sent have been included in the public record. So for those of you that were asking for that, it has been completed and it is done. Also, we do have a formal process that's written within our land development code that we must follow when it relates to public hearing items. The first is the introduction of the item. Then we will open the public hearing on that item. Then there's a staff report. The applicant is eligible to present at that time. And then we do have public testimony. We have a large number of cards up here. And because of all of the time that's already been spent, both reading emails and letters and also in lots of conversations with residents and with the applicant, I'm going to limit time for 10 minutes for the pro side and 10 minutes for the con side so that we are really efficient and use our time wisely. So for those of you that are here for both the pro and the con and that wish to speak, I had more than 50 cards. I suggest, and we have done this before, that we ask you to figure out if there's a few spokespeople for the group. We've gotten a lot of data and information already and like I said, lots and lots of emails, hundreds of emails from both. So I'm gonna ask that now would be the time, we're gonna do the consent agenda first and then we will go into the public hearing. There's a few public hearing items. So there's time now for you to work that out, maybe out in the lobby, and then to come back in and we will then be able to figure out how the 10 minutes will be allocated for each side. So I hope that makes sense. We've done this before and it really is in the interest of efficiency for our public meeting. At this time, we will move to our consent agenda and I look to my vice mayor to assist.
Thank you, mayor. We've had a couple items asked to be polled that would be items eight, nine, and 12. So I would move to approve the consent agenda for items six, seven, 10, 11, 11A, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That takes us to agenda item eight.
Mayor, thank you for letting me pull the item. It's a painful one for me because I don't want to make waves and I certainly won't ramble on this, but I, I don't, in principle, in practicality, the money that we're losing here is nominal. But in principle, it's really no different from any other item I've had to vote against that's tax dollars going to charity. So I pulled it for that purpose. I'm not gonna do a dissertation. I've done many of those on this topic. So that was all, mayor. Thank you.
Mayor? I have one real quick comment on this item, which is different than what Councilmember Peterson's comments. Mine has to do with the state meddling in local affairs again, which is something that's a bugaboo for me and I think this is a good example again of the state interfering in a local affair.
Mayor, I move that we approve agenda item eight.
Second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 6-1 vote. Thank you. That moves us to agenda item nine. I actually was the one that requested this item be polled because there's quite a bit of history about this particular item. As a point of reference, in 2009, the town bought this 80-acre parcel at Chandler Heights and Greenfield Roads for $300,000 per acre. And we also purchased a 58-acre parcel at Germaine and Greenfield Roads for $300,000 per acre. Quick math will tell you that when that vote occurred in 2009, none of us council members that are here, nor I as the mayor, were on this council at the time. The combined 138 acres totaled approximately 41.45 million. And at the time, the town intended to develop two parks on the land. Forgive me, I actually did, I have some notes here because there are some technical pieces of this and I wanted to make sure that we got these right. In 2015, the opportunity arose with the county to gain more than 220 additional acres at Queen Creek and Higley Roads, so just a few miles away from these sites, where the town already owned land for about $10. Which, as a point of reference, I'd like to remind our town manager, he told it would, told us it would cost us $1 and it ended up costing us 10 times what he told us at $10. And that is how we identified our site at Gilbert Regional Park, which we've all now broken ground on and we're excited about what's coming there. In 2016, we went to the voters on a ballot and asked the voters if we could sell the 58 acres and the 80-acre site. And overwhelmingly, the voters supported us selling that land. We watched the market to determine when was the best time for the auctions. And we tried for one of the properties in May of 2017, but the timing wasn't right. And so we waited. Both properties went to auction this fall, the 58 acres on August 14th and this 80 acres on September 11th. Council approved the high bid and contract with Desert Vista 100 LLC, an affiliate of Blandford Homes, a Gilbert business, on August 16th for 18.5 million, which is approximately $1 million more than what we paid for that land in 2009. Desert Vista 100 LLC, also Blandford Homes, was also the highest bidder at the September 11th auction for the 80 acres. And so tonight, we are considering that second contract for 19.14 million for that 80-acre site. Together, the contracts total 37.64 million, which is $50,000 above the appraised value for both parcels. This is about $3.8 million less though than what the land was purchased for, again, prior to this council arriving on the dais. I wanted to make sure all those facts were clear because there's been a history here and probably not one that we look upon favorably in the town of Gilbert. And I wanted to make sure it was clear ahead of this vote why I was also supporting the sale of this parcel. We have had executive sessions on this item as well. And I feel like while we may not be getting all the dollars out of this property that we wish we were getting out of, out of it, this is, the money that, the proceeds from the sale of these parcels will be used to fund and build the new regional park. And this is an amenity that our community wants now. They've made that clear to us over many, many years. And I support the efforts to sell this property tonight and I will support this contracted agenda item. I don't have a crystal ball and I don't know if the price will, will ever really reach what, what they were, what they paid for it so many years ago. But unfortunately, this is an, this is an opportunity actually for us to close that chapter of Gilbert and really to start fresh and start new. And I support that effort at this time. Council, would you like to comment? Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you. Your, your words were very important and I appreciate you expressing those facts and the history. You know, I've, I've been asked why I wanted to support this because I, I'm with you in supporting this. Couple of things I would just add is that this is commonly understood as the high time in the real estate land market. So the timing here is very good. It's about as good as we're gonna get. As you, as you mentioned, we're not sure, you know, if we'll ever make it back. But what this does is this does put it on the tax rolls. And so that gap that you identified, it's gonna start to shrink, you know, through this mechanism because then they'll start to be able to contribute to the town in other different ways. So I thought that would be important to explain as well and I'll be supporting this tonight. But thank you again for, for your words there. I think those are important things as we take.
With that, we will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve agenda item number nine.
Second.
All in favor, please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That moves us, I believe, to agenda item 12.
Mayor, thank you for allowing me a moment here. This item is for some improvements to LA District Park. You know, in fairness, this is kind of a lemon we inherited. You could call it a money pit. And, and here's my concern. This, I've been told by staff, is primarily aesthetics. Anything that's safety, I think we need to do. But it's my position that, and everyone knows I disagree, that we took this in-house and I'll continue to maintain that position. I don't want to continue to pour money into this. It's unnecessary. I don't want anything to be unsafe. There's cost of liability, plus we want people to be safe. But this is not that. And so I just, I refuse to pour money into the, the money pit as we go forward. So that, that's all, mayor. I know there is a little component of this that could be considered a, a safety-related thing, but I'm also aware that it could be handled at a much cheaper cost. Thank you, mayor, for the moment.
Mayor, I move that we approve agenda item 12.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 5-2 vote. Thank you. I believe that completes our consent agenda tonight. We move now to our public hearing agenda items. Does council wish to comment on any of the other three public hearing items tonight? Okay, I will open the public hearing on agenda items 26, 27, and 28. I will close the public hearing on those agenda items and entertain a motion.
I move to approve those items.
Second.
That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. We are now on agenda item 29.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
I'm sorry. There was two seconds. Yeah. I didn't hear which one it was.
Councilmember Cook. Thank you. Thank you. We are now on agenda item 29. I will open the public hearing on agenda item 29 and look to Nathan to assist us.
Pardon the pause. Okay. This is AP 1804. It's the Appeal to the Planning Commission's Decision Regarding Use Permit 1807 Regarding the Elegant Barn. The Elegant Barn is 1.1-acre parcel here located at the south, or the northeast corner of Houston Avenue and Greenfield Road, which is just south of baseline. Excuse me. Here's an enlargement of the site so you can kind of get a better idea and context of the parcel. Brief history on it, because it's been somewhat extensive, is the original use permit was approved in 2012, October of 2012. At that time, the Planning Commission did not approve a specific condition prohibiting alcohol on the site as it was understood through their operations plan, the Elegant Barn operations plan, and from the applicant, that no open bar alcohol service was going to be provided on the site, among other conditions, although that's the primary one in question. to be provided on the site, among other conditions, although that's the primary one in question here tonight. So, that use permit was later appealed to the council in November of 2012. At that time, the town council added a condition not allowing the use of alcohol on, on the subject site, on the facility for the Elegant Barn. Now, in January of 2014, the Elegant Barn received its first certificate of occupancy and began operation, and then later in 2015, there was an amendment to the existing use permit. Among other modifications that the applicant requested was, one, to allow the use of alcohol on the site. Now, that, that, a number of the conditions were amended by the Planning Commission at that time, although the request to allow alcohol on the site was not, so the prohibition of alcohol on the site was continued at that time. Now, that leads us to last month, where the Planning Commission approved UP 1807 specifically requesting the allowance of a third-party vendor to provide alcohol on the subject site. There were two conditions that the Planning Commission added to that, which you can see on your screen, limiting things like times that alcohol could be served, as well as an additional security officer. So, that leads us to tonight, which is an appeal of that decision. Tonight's appeal is directly related to the service of alcohol on the site. And of course, I wanted to touch on neighborhood input. As the mayor mentioned, there's a tremendous amount of input on both sides that has been provided to you, and I think everyone's aware of both sides of it, although the neighborhood is, I'll briefly touch on it, obviously concerned, but not limited to potential for increased public nuisance with the service of alcohol, traffic and safety concerns on Houston, and the impact of the neighborhood. The applicant is requesting the third-party vendor because it feels that it is restricted competitively with other wedding venues, as well as the, the facility has been in operation for four years and it demonstrated that it is a, it is a good neighbor. So, that is the reasoning from the applicant. Now, you have three potential motions before you. The first is to uphold the Planning Commission's decision and their conditions that they approved UP 1807 with, which are before you there, A, B, and C. Motion number two would be to make the findings and uphold the Planning Commission's decision and create conditions of your own. And then the third motion would be to overturn the Planning Commission's decision, which would effectively deny the applicant's request to provide alcohol service on the site, and then revert back to all the original conditions of approval of the previous use permits. So, with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions by the council for staff? Thank you, Nathan.
Thank you.
At this point, we will invite the applicant to come forward.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I've got a PowerPoint here, if I can make it work. All right. Okay, so my name is Adam Buck. I represent Dennis and Stella Elliott and the Elegant Barn. For the past five years, they've been operating as a wedding reception venue. This has been a dream of theirs ever since they retired. They're from California. They moved to Arizona with a dream of starting a wedding reception venue with their daughter. So as you know, well, here you've got a picture of the five-bedroom home along with the barn. Now, back in 2012, I'm sure most of you remember, the conditional use permit they've been operating under. There were, as they went through that process, they talked to a lot of neighbors, and there were some in favor that wanted the reception venue there, and there were some that were opposed to it. And those that were opposed primarily didn't like it because of the potential noise, traffic, and alcohol. So the, the Elliott's, they met with the neighbors to talk about how they could minimize the impact on the neighborhood, and they made several concessions, and they addressed the concerns. They fixed up and landscaped the property. They paved 250 feet of Houston Avenue. They agreed to restrictions on live music, restrictions on the placement of audio speakers, added insulation to the barn walls to prevent the transfer of noise, additional roofing material, and said that it would be a non-alcoholic wedding reception venue. And they spent approximately $100,000 doing that. So, then they opened up for business, January 2014. People start coming in, brides and grooms, taking tours of the property, and at the end of the tour, then they have to tell them, hey, by the way, there's no alcohol whatsoever allowed on this property. Is that a deal breaker for you? They took notes, and these were the numbers. And so as of 2017, 57% of the people said that alcohol was a deal breaker. Now, initially, as the Elliott's met with their neighbors, most of those who were opposed to the, the alcohol were members of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. The Elliott's felt like virtually everybody in Gilbert were members of the church, and so they thought this agreement would be a good one. But the lessons that they learned is actually only a small fraction of people in Gilbert and the surrounding areas are LDS. And they found out that nearly 60% of the customers want to celebrate with alcohol. We also have the problem of new venues popping up. Since 2012, two new venues in Gilbert, two in Apache Junction, three in Mesa, and all of them serve alcohol. So we have more options for people and, and fewer for the, the venue, fewer customers. So let me just show you some numbers. This is the number of events per year that they've had. So zero in 2012, 2013, 2014 is their first year. They had 46 events. And if you compare that with the present, 2018, they project having fewer events this year than they did the very first year they opened. That's not a, a very good trend. Now, here's their net income by tax year. You can see in the first four years, they had to put a lot of their own money into it just to get it up and running. 2016, they started making money, $45,000. 2017, $27,000. Now they're projected to lose $36,000 this year. So obviously, this is not good. If you're a small business owner, these numbers are not good. So the lesson that they've learned in the past five years, a non-alcoholic wedding reception venue is not commercially viable. So if they can't get alcohol, the ability to serve alcohol, then they will go under. They will go out of business. Now, there could be some cheering behind me from the neighbors. I don't know, maybe that's what they would prefer. Maybe some of you might, might prefer that, but that is the reality of their situation. So the option, if they can't do this as a wedding reception venue, then what is this property going to be? The Elliott's have had to think about that. And the most viable option is a short-term vacation rental party house. Problem with that is that we go from a controlled atmosphere to an uncontrolled atmosphere. There are no drinking of alcohol restrictions in Airbnb locations. So it is a nice party house. But just to give you an idea of some of the problems that could come up if we go that direction, there was a New York Times article in 2015, and they talked about some of the issues. So they were talking about Austin, Texas, and a group of residents took their complaints to the city, and this is some of the things they said. "It is loud, and there's live music and karaoke stuff, and it's all done outside because of the pool. They're out in front at 4:00 in the afternoon waiting for their Uber to come, drunk on the front lawn." Some other homeowners had complaints about guests including trash bins overflowing, beer cans, public urination, catcalling, foul language, racist remarks, companies throwing events and appearances of a rainbow-colored painted pony. And then other people said, sometimes when they're outside, they're playing beer pong just wearing their underwear. So I'm just painting a picture that short-term vacation rentals can be a problem as well. The city of Austin, they had 266 complaints about short-term vacation rentals, an average of 88 complaints per year. And they said that the behavior in these places is very difficult to enforce. So the homeowners' concerns, they were the quality of life and their property values, but these places are very easy to rent. With platforms like Airbnb, VRBO, FlipKey, HomeAway, it's not a, a problem to rent these out virtually every weekend to different parties. But that's not what the, the Elliott's want to do. They want to run their wedding reception venue with the limited ability to serve alcohol under some pretty severe restrictions. Staff report, as you saw, recommended approval. They said that it meets all four criteria. Now, interestingly, in the staff report, this is on page five, it says, "It is not typical practice to limit the use of alcohol at locations operating legally as a commercial business, whether by straight zoning or a conditional use permit." It's out of the ordinary. So here's some of the stipulations that the Elliott's are agreeing to do. They have a four-hour window, 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. So if somebody brings the alcohol, third-party, somebody takes the alcohol away. They're licensed and trained third-parties that serve it. They have private security that will be on hand during these events. They'll have a security guard or a police officer off-duty that will direct traffic. And at the Planning Commission, they said the town of Gilbert may revoke the privilege in the future if it causes any significant problems. So my last point, you can trust the Elliott's. They've had 250 events, one parking issue, and they immediately fixed it. They've aggressively self-regulated all of the restrictions that have been placed upon them to date, including alcohol. Now, there's a couple of instances where the father of the bride was in the parking lot trying to drink. Another instance where a grandmother of the bride was out there with alcohol trying to celebrate. Dennis went out there and made them pour it out, and made them leave the property, and said, absolutely not, you can't do it. Now, the Elliott's have integrity. If they didn't, they would just turn a blind eye to this stuff. It would be so hard for anyone to know whether there was drinking on the property or not. But they know the right thing to do is come here and ask your permission and do it the right way, and that's what we are asking for. The staff recommended it. The Planning Commission listened to both sides, and they crafted a solution that respects the rights and the interests of both parties, and we're asking you to uphold that, the ruling by the Planning Commission, and give them an opportunity to show you that alcohol can be served responsibly in, as a wedding reception venue. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Any questions for the applicant? Councilmember Anderson?
Couple, Adam.
Yes.
First is, are there any other types of events that are held onsite other than wedding receptions?
Yes, there are wedding receptions, I mean, pretty much any type of party, celebration, retirement parties, I mean, I'm sure Dennis can give you a whole list, but yeah, there are lots of different types of events that people want to celebrate with alcohol.
And the venues that you showed that were in other cities, are those similar in a residential setting like this one is?
Yeah, the distance between the homes is similar, and they're able to serve alcohol without any issues at those locations, apparently. I'm not aware of any major problems at those. Now, the difference is that the zoning is different. They're straight zoning and we're a conditional use permit. But the safety issue shouldn't be any different. Just because you have a label on one doesn't mean that it automatically puts a protective bubble over the people in that area any more than it does. So I guess the risk, as far as I'm concerned, seems to be the same to me. It's either dangerous or it isn't in proximity to homes.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions from? Thank you.
Is that it?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, we will move to public testimony at this time. I know there was some organization that went on. If you are one of the designees for the 10 minutes, can you just raise your hand?
Is this the 10 minutes opposed?
Just any of them, if you're one of the designees to speak. Okay, what I'm going to have you guys all do is just come down and stand sort of like an on-deck. Joe Gusick can show you where on-deck is. He's usually over in on-deck. So if any of you are here to speak...
Are we doing them in an order?
Go ahead, head over there and I'll explain it. Go ahead. We're going to set the clock for 10 minutes each, so those who are against the project, we will have that first 10 minutes, and those who are for the project will be the second 10 minutes. But I'm also going to do one maybe different thing, because I believe our chamber president does wish to speak, and as she represents 700-plus businesses in the town. Kathy, did you still wish to speak on this agenda item? Okay. All right, and so Kathy Tilke, if you'd like to come down to the podium, just give us your name.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Community of residents, please.
Thank you, Mayor and council, for the opportunity. I know that you have a letter of support in your packet already. I just wanted to take a moment, oh, by the way, Kathy Tilke, Gilbert Chamber of Commerce, here in Gilbert. What I was hoping that you would consider tonight is allowing the alcohol with stipulations that you feel will meet the needs of the neighbors and, and the business today. They've been a good business as, as far as we are concerned, and have been good members of the chamber and supportive of the community. So I'm hoping that we can come to a compromise tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. All right, I'm going to ask our town manager to set the timer for 10 minutes. So those who are against the project, you will have the first 10 minutes, and what we will do is have you state your name and your city of residence. And at that time, when the clock is over, even if not everyone has gotten through, that's our 10 minutes, so we're going to move forward with that. Thank you. And you are first.
My name is Ron Barney. Speak quick so we can get through there. Wish we had a little more time to talk about it. You've seen a lot of letters from all the people, so you kind of know where our stand is. In 2012, Commissioners Meeting Chairman Whitman said, knowing that there will be a residence living there and not being turned over to a full-time commercial use was huge for her. She's going on to say, with the neighborhood that were immediately north and east of the facility, came out in support to the venue, it made a huge impact. Go back to, in 2012, Councilmember Daniels said, everyone needs to have trust that neighbors are looking out for each other. She went on to say that everyone liked to work on the building, trust with each other and with their neighbors. This is a neighborhood. We're talking about our neighborhood. They keep talking about small businesses. Most of us have small businesses. We're not against small business. We're against small businesses in the wrong area. We're against having our neighborhood impacted by what's going to happen. We made a commitment as a neighborhood to stand behind the barn and support them, to get them approved, to get them the CUP. Once they had their approval, now they have all kinds of excuses. They say you can trust them. The facts, it says $2.6 million lost in revenue, and then last time in the Commissioners Meeting, they said, well, it's really only $50,000. We're kind of exaggerating. There's a lot of statements. They talk about how we're so opposed to, to them and making them successful. We're not opposed to them being successful, just do it in the right area, do it in the right place. They made a commitment to us as neighbors. We supported them. We went behind them. We says, we support you. And then they come back and says, oh, well, we made a mistake, sorry. It's kind of the bait-and-switch type of thing. They're going against their word. They made a commitment to us. Thank you.
Julie Turley, Gilbert, Arizona, Houston Avenue resident. We've been there 18 and a half years. I'm concerned about the generation of more business there, more vehicles down our road. I would invite you to come drive Houston Avenue, our dirt road. It's a single-lane road. Children ride bicycles out there all the time on this road. Where I live, directly in front of my house, is a blind corner. They don't show the pictures in that barn picture that Houston divides their barn from the parking lot that they have to use. More cars would put a burden on us using, entering and exiting on Houston Avenue. More cars would put a burden on us using, entering and exiting on Houston Avenue. And not only that, but inebriated drivers, puts more children at risk with that. We want to keep our neighborhood safe. We want to preserve what we all bought into. We want to keep it a safe environment, the safety of Gilbert. We're longtime Gilbert residents. We want to keep it that way. We want children to be able to ride bicycles. People can continue to walk down that road without having to move to the side for cars to go back and forth. We want to keep it a safe place. The Elliott's, the Elliott's think of anything that they want when they want to get something, and they don't live in our neighborhood. They don't understand what we have to live on, on a day-to-day basis. Please listen to us as neighbors. We live in this neighborhood. We do get affected by these changes that happen, and I just want our neighborhood to be preserved and kept safe and peaceful. Thank you.
Darren DeChezere, 2573 East Desert Lane. I think Ron brought up this map. This shows all the neighbors that are against this. I think that should say enough right there. Talking a little bit about alcohol, I think we all know that alcohol, throwing alcohol into something is going to cause some, some problems. Our children are our main concern, the safety in our neighborhood. One drink can cause impairment, only one drink. Seth Banya on your commission, he, you should read his testimony, I'll read some of it. He has direct experience with this event business. He said he can't count the number of times he has seen people take alcohol limits beyond their capacity, even with third, a third-party vendor. Because alcohol is allowed on the premise, he sees bridal parties sneaking in their own alcohol and doing their own shots and things of that nature. He continues, "He believes their track record could damage, could be damaged if alcohol is involved." He said, "He has been at the venue at Val Vista Lakes," that's one mile away from our house. "He had seen Gilbert Police and the sheriff called multiple times since passing alcohol." You guys talked about stipulations. Well, if certain infractions happen, you're going to come back and we're going to have to say, "Well, well, if, if Seth, according to Seth, this is going to cause problems." Well, are we going to come back to you in a month and say, "Well, something happened? Our kid got ran over?" We're concerned about our children in our neighborhood and the traffic in there. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Malia Wheeler. I live in Gilbert on Desert Lane. We have a statement in our home that's repeated quite often, and it's this true statement, "Expectations ruin relationships." The Elliott's spelled out in no uncertain terms what we could expect from them, and since then, we have been back before the planning commission and town council several times to modify stipulations that the Elliott's told the neighborhood we could expect from them. They have ruined the relationship. We can no longer trust the Elliott's to keep their word on anything that they presented to us in 2012. They keep coming back, slowly changing one stipulation after another. In this ruined relationship, the neighborhood has been painted as the villain, and the Elliott's are unfairly treated, restricted, and nothing but a good neighbor, and we are against small business, and they are the victim, when in actuality it is the reverse. The neighbors have been unfairly treated, we are restricted, and we have been nothing but good neighbors to the barn. That's why there are no complaints against them. The Elliott's continue to change the terms of their conditional use permit. What else has changed? Not the neighborhood's opposition to alcohol. The majority of the neighborhood is opposed to the stipulation being modified. The Elliott's chose this concession in order to operate their business here. Now they claim they are losing business because of this stipulation, and they have renamed it and called it a restriction. They claim it's unfair, that we are against small business, that no other venue in Gilbert has this restriction imposed upon them. There is no other event venue in Gilbert to which you can compare this venue. They are the only ones on a residential property. Please keep that in mind. Everyone else is commercial. If they want to run a commercial business, they need to relocate to a commercial location. Thank you for your time.
My name is Josh Gardner. I'm a Gilbert resident as of three months ago. Moved here from Seattle, and a big part of moving to Gilbert was in asking my colleagues, "Where's a good place to raise my family?" Of all the choices, I work in Chandler. We looked at Tempe, Mesa, Gilbert, Awatuki, Queen Creek, number of different communities, and the overwhelming response when we asked was that Gilbert is the best place to raise your family. I'm in a unique position in this situation because I had nothing to do with the barn in the first place. Don't know how or why it was approved in a residential area, and this wouldn't be an issue in the first place if they just put it somewhere else. But just to put a personal face to this, I have a son. His name is Robbie. There are three homes between our home and the barn. Robbie has Down Syndrome, which means in most cases, he's not aware of any kind of danger or impact, like going down a road where there's a car coming down. He wouldn't recognize that as something dangerous to him, let alone someone who would be impaired. But it's not just the impairment of the alcohol. Business in the first place is a bad idea, and even if the alcohol were approved and the business started to do tremendously better, that's not good either. We're kind of stuck in this place. We have these zoning rules to help protect the residents. All I would ask is that we just honor those codes so that it keeps the residents safe. Let's keep the family community that my friends explained to me as, as we're part of Gilbert, let's keep that, that same community feel going, and let's keep Houston Avenue safe for, for the families that live there.
I am Sherri Schmecpepper. I live on Desert Lane here in Gilbert. According to the town's general plan, policy 4.9 says that we're to respect the character of all neighborhoods by encouraging them to preserve and improve upon the positive qualities that make each area unique. Children play in our front yards. We walk, run, jog, ride, walk our dogs, our goats, our cows, down on the streets. This is a part of the character of our rural neighborhood. We're also very diverse people. We, we're diverse in our skills, our educations, our different businesses. We're diverse in our interests and in our religions. And just to kill a little rumor, this is not an LDS thing. We have people who are LDS, Catholic, Lutheran, Baptist, Agnostic, Atheistic, and Nondenominational. I myself enjoy a little wine once in a while, and we do brew our own beer. So this is not an LDS thing. As noted with the other speakers, the effects of the addition of alcohol will change the character of our neighborhood. It's a unique neighborhood. We love it. We don't want alcohol. We don't want a fully commercial, non-residential operation within our neighborhood. We do not want our community's character impeded upon. And we don't, and we want our property rights protected, the rights of the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. That does complete the 10 minutes. We will start the clock again for those who wish to speak in favor of the venue. Excuse me, of the conditional use permit.
Hello, I am Kristiana Hammond. I am an employee and the daughter of Dennis and Stella. A couple of things about what has been said. First of all, as far as Houston Road goes, that is what connects us to the rest of the neighborhood. But if anybody that has been there has noticed that if you don't know the neighborhood, you don't even know that's a road. As far as people see from our barn, the pavement ends right next to our garbage can, and the rest is just a tiny little dirt access road to who knows what. There's no reason anybody would ever drive down there from our barn unless they live there. The other thing is, sure, there are other venues that possibly have issues with alcohol, but that would not happen at ours because we watch every single thing that happens there. We check everybody all day long. I spend the entire time there. I spend 12 hours a day there on event days. Tomorrow, I'll be there for 12 hours a day to make sure not a drop gets in. And trust me, people have tried many, many times, and we stop it, and we still stop it because it's not supposed to be there. Even if we get the four-hour thing, which will be very small, it'll be between 5:00 and 9:00, it'll be nighttime, so even once people have started drinking and somehow they're out there and maybe are slightly inebriated, that's really a tiny window for anybody to go maraud the neighborhood. And really, just there's no chance of any danger as far as I can tell. I mean, there's just not. But I had a little statement, and I'm just going to read it really quick. My parents own the Elegant Barn. I've worked with them for the past two and a half years. I know very well the effort we make to ensure that our events are held with the utmost respect to this community. I personally put in 12-hour days when we have events to make sure that everything is right from beginning to end. We don't just hand the keys to people and let them go wild. We attend to every detail to make sure everything turns out well and go well beyond our stipulations to make sure that nothing will bother our neighbors. Even those that oppose us have admitted in their presentations to the planning commission that we have managed our events very well. This along with the well-manicured look and homey atmosphere of the barn should be seen as an asset to the community. Our events are nothing like the massive blowouts that you find at reception halls and community centers, and we pride ourselves on that. Our clients come to us because they want us, they want the kind of quiet and intimate event that we specialize in, which is why our barn fits perfectly in this neighborhood. We don't want to disturb this community. The quietness is what makes us special, and it's something that we're very keen to protect. It's hard not to take what the opposition, opposition has said about us personally. They look past all the hard work that we've put into our business over the past six years. They call my parents liars, and they treat us like we're careless, greedy jerks. I know they believe they're protecting something that means a lot to them, but in doing that, they're attacking something that means at least as much to my family and even more because our livelihood depends on it. So, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. My name is Stacia Allen. I've been a Gilbert resident for over five years, and I'm proud to have had all three of my children here. My husband and I own a PLL, so we're a small business, that we utilize for real estate. We were the top real estate team for our company, Remax, in Gilbert for all of 2017. I've known Dennis and Stella Elliott, the owners of the Elegant Barn, for over 10 years and have assisted them in personal real estate transactions, and have also known them on a personal level. They were at my wedding oh-so-long ago. I am lucky enough to have been to several events at the Elegant Barn, including a charity event that was held on behalf of the Gilbert Leadership Committee that raised money for the Boys and Girls Club, and I'm very excited to be hosting a Breakfast with Santa event there in December with all proceeds going to the House of Refuge. I wanted to speak for a moment on the real estate effect, as I know that neighbors are concerned about property values if alcohol is allowed at the Elegant Barn. I can attest that values in adjacent neighborhoods to a similar venue, The Cottage, which is a wedding venue that recently opened on Gilbert Road, it's very similar to the Elegant Barn. It faces Gilbert Road, whereas the Elegant Barn faces Greenfield. They are a home, a house, that was converted into a wedding venue, so very apples-to-apples in my opinion. And it has not seen an impact on residential property values in the area since its opening. In fact, values are up over 14% since last year in comparison to 9% for the zip code as a whole. The access to the Elegant Barn is similar to The Cottage, that entry and exit via, is via a major road and not through a community. As Tiana mentioned, the entrance and exit for the Elegant Barn is from Greenfield Road. It is not through Houston. People don't enter around Houston. They park in the church that is just south of the Elegant Barn, or they park in the small parking lot at the barn. In closing, I would like to speak about how Dennis and Stella run their venue. I helped with marketing at the Elegant Barn when they opened, and I saw many events there over the year that I worked there. Dennis has the utmost concern for neighbors and walks around during events to monitor them. His largest concern in the past was noise levels, and he even carries a decibel meter around to ensure that noise is at an appropriate level. About a year ago, I remember a story that Dennis wasn't happy with the sound level from a DJ, and after the DJ disregarded requests to turn the music down, Dennis walked over and unplugged the speakers from the DJ's sound music. Since this occurrence, the Elegant Barn has changed their policy to only allow three DJs at their events who know the rules of the Elegant Barn so that they can make the neighbors happy and make sure that they are being good neighbors and not having high sound levels. I'm 100% confident that they would police the distribution of alcohol the same way. They aren't asking for open bars, they aren't asking for self-service bars. They're asking for a limited amount, a limited amount of time to be allowed for brides, grooms, and wedding guests to have a drink or two, served by a licensed bartender, and celebrate the couples that are getting married. In the back of my head, I have an image of Dennis kicking someone out of an event because they were getting close to an appropriate level, because I know that he would do that. I hope that neighbors and the town council will uphold the decision of the planning commission to allow the Elegant Barn to make the requested changes to their conditional use permit and support one of the amazing town's small businesses.
Hi, my name is Ken Crandall. I live in Gilbert. I apologize, I'm probably going to accidentally offend. I'm just going to read off of my notes that I've jotted down real quick. I am a member of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, just to kind of set the tone for, for who I am. I have never tasted alcohol. I don't like it. If I had my way, it would be illegal. But the thing is, I don't have my way. We are a Gilbert, that's, or we're a community in Gilbert that's very, very diverse, and I feel that everyone should have their free agency. I just want to kind of reiterate some of the things that have already been stated. I've driven that street loop. I've seen where the children would play, where children will very clearly not play, and I see no reasonable reason that there's any danger of alcohol, basically, that will take place here. Let me jump through here. I've read a lot of, pretty much all the letters that have been put through. Honestly, I feel like they're full of a lot of fear and paranoia, a lot of logical fallacies, things that I don't feel have a lot of, a lot of basis. I questioned Dennis at length to find out whether or not I would agree with his statement, and I feel like he's taken all of the steps necessary. I feel like he exhibits actually all of the things upon the posters there. He is a man of integrity. I feel like he has his livelihood on the line, so I think he will actually take all the steps necessary to make sure that, that no harm comes to anyone in the neighborhood. That's all. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jim Moran. I'm the owner of the Blue Asabi Sushi Restaurant in Santan Mall. Coming up on 11 years there, serving alcohol 11 years. Been in the restaurant business for 35 years, on restaurants, bars, nightclubs, wedding venues. I've worked with some good people, I've worked with some not-so-good people, and I've never had any issue with the service of alcohol. And what the most important point is responsible service of alcohol. When you take on a liquor license, you have more liability than doctors have for dispensing medication, which seems kind of crazy, but it's true. If a doctor prescribes you medication and you overdose and die, they have no liability. As an owner of a liquor license, if you irresponsibly serve someone and they get into a car accident and hurt someone or kill someone, you are liable. And I'm living proof of 35 years in the operations without ever having a single issue. Having known Stella and Dennis for five or six years now, both professionally and socially, I'm very confident that they will do whatever it takes to be responsible, to take care of both their business, their clients, and their neighborhood. Thank you.
Actually, don't clap in council chambers. We try to keep a decorum because we have business to do here. But thank you, thank you to all of you who came, and thank you to all of you who spoke tonight. We appreciate you bringing those comments to us. At this time, I will look to my council. Do you guys have any questions that need to be answered, or is it time for comments? Councilmember Ray?
We've talked about this at length, so I will be brief on this. I will say to Dennis and to his wife Stella, the barn is a beautiful place. I got to go in 2012, and we talked about this the first time, and I think I've been six times since then for different events there, and it's a great place. I had the chance to be on the council in 2012 when we discussed this the first time around, at least this council the first time around. And it was a contested discussion amongst the council. I was one of the people who was in favor of, of the barn and the conditional use permit. And one of the main reasons I was in favor of it was when, what I remembered out of the blue, the applicant and the attorney voluntarily said, "No alcohol." And it seemed like when that happened, much of the neighborhood concern died down, and it made it much easier as a council to say, "Okay, if the neighborhoods are not going to feel as impacted by not serving alcohol, then I, I'll go forward with that." And I frankly don't believe that a certificate of, of, excuse me, conditional use permit would have ever been granted in the first place had they not agreed to the no alcohol. And so, for me, this is not a small business versus big business or no business. I'm a small business owner. I understand the challenges of running a business. And comment was made about not being typical to limit alcohol by conditional use permit. I just want to make it clear that it was the applicant and his attorneys who made that concession. It wasn't imposed by the council, and you have to do this in order to have this happen. And so, for those reasons, I am not going to support the additional conditional use permit. I want it to be as it was before. And again, that's nothing to do with small business. It's simply what was agreed to, and if this was in a commercial zoning, I think that we would not be having this discussion. It would be a done deal, and they'd go through the alcohol permit process, and it'd be over. But for those reasons, I believe that we should stick with the two... But for those reasons, I believe that we should stick with the 2012 conditional use permit. 2012, and then the amendment of 2015.
You. Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you, Mayor. For those that don't know me, I'm a recovering politician about to be fully cured. I'm not going to be on this council anymore. I did not run for reelection, and I'm going to celebrate the time with my family that gets added to my schedule. I just say that because I want you to know, nothing that I say or do has any political motives. Actually, I'm such a terrible politician, I don't know if it really ever has. I don't know what's good for me when it comes to politics. Ask anybody. But, so, when, just procedurally, I think it's important to understand what we're doing here tonight. A conditional use permit is basically, it's kind of a use-by-right, as long as all the conditions are met. In fact, it really is. I've rehearsed this with different attorneys multiple times to make sure my understanding's correct. We have the job as a council to evaluate each situation that's applied for under a conditional use permit against the four findings. If we honestly believe it meets those findings, then we're obligated to approve. So that's really the position we're in. Other people will describe what they're doing and why they're doing it different ways, but ultimately, that's what we're all tasked to do. So as I go through those findings, there's two of them that are very just-check-the-box. They're just matter-of-fact. There's not a lot of opinion about them. One is being, does it conform to our zoning? And yes, it does, because it allows for conditional use of this type. Again, we've got to look at some other findings first, but that, that box is checked. The other is, does it require, does it comply with applicable local, state, federal requirements, that kind of thing? Yes, very check-the-box kind of thing. Our town staff is experts on those two. Pretty simple. We know that it meets those. The two that are a little harder are, it will not be detrimental to the health, safety, or general welfare of persons living or working in the vicinity to adjacent property to the neighbors or the public in general. The other one that's really kind of related, to be honest, is the proposed use as condition will not unreasonably interfere with the use and enjoyment of nearby properties. So, you know, I know there's a lot of discussion about, you know, commitment was made, they need to keep their commitment. You know, the same authority by which permit was issued is the same authority we're meeting here again tonight, and our job really hasn't changed. We still have to measure against those standards. So it's not, you know, that's where we're at. So to me, I'm looking at it afresh. Does it meet the conditions or not? This property is a little unique. It's on an arterial. We need to keep that in mind. If it wasn't, I would feel very differently about this and the original approval, to begin with. Here's the other thing. We have a neighbor report. I'm just going to read one because I thought, this is a neighbor who decided to take a neutral position, but it's actually the next-door neighbor, and I thought what they said was very telling. If anybody knows, it is their immediately adjacent neighbor that shares the frontage, you know, their closest. They said that they have observed the manner in which innocent Stella managed their business and admired their ability to contain the traffic, noise, and their guest behavior. They have not impacted us at all, and they have been good neighbors. We appreciate that they have always kept their word to us and shown respect for our feelings about their business. So I have to ask myself, are they going to comply with conditions that we put on them, too? And it sounds to me, by the people who know best and who, out of respect for all the other neighbors, decided to be neutral, those very complimentary words mean a lot to me. Who would know more about the noise and traffic than they would? So I do think also we need to consider, there are rental rights, that if they decide to go another way with this property, state law affords very, this is Arizona, has very powerful laws protecting property rights, especially related to rentals, and this council would be very limited on anything we could do to. I think, in really all measures, it is best for everyone to have a venue that's got conditions. It's contained. They've made it clear that their intention is to use it one way or the other, and I really believe with the conditions in place, this will not be a negative, significant impact. I know there's a lot, people will think I'm crazy for that, but we all have to make our decision based on the facts before us, and that's, that's what I see. And so, you know, if they don't meet the conditions, it'll be revoked. So, and you guys are definitely good watchdogs, and will let us know. So, Mayor, for that reason, I'll be supporting. I might be totally alone. Again, I'm a really bad politician, but thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. So, anyone else? Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you. I tried to keep a very open mind, as much as I could, on this, on the, this whole item. I'm going to come at it from a little bit different angle on the findings that Councilmember Peterson was talking about. The most important to me is not just focused on that specific area, but the health, safety, and general welfare of the community in general, which we have to take a look at from a higher position, I think. There are two things that are very concerning to me. The first is the risk. The risk is extremely high. It would only take one incident, only one minor incident, to happen on that property, and that would lead into my second concern, which is liability. And I know it was mentioned tonight that a third part, that the applicant and a third party would have to carry extreme amounts of liability insurance, but I can tell you from experience in the past that if there is one incident, just one incident that happens either onsite or because of an event on the site somewhere else, the search is for the deepest pocket. And the deepest pocket would be the citizens of Gilbert, would be us. And that concerns me greatly, and that's what I look at, that we're, we're charged with the responsibility to look for the general welfare of the entire community, and I think the risk is too high. The liability would be too high for the town, and as such, I cannot support this.
Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you. Appreciate the comments of the other council members. Won't repeat those comments here, but a couple of things. Number one, did have a chance to visit with Mr. Band on the Planning Commission and was briefed there. It was a split vote, you know, it was very, very much a split vote. So I think that's important to know as, as we consider this, and I know that's, that's not news to anybody. As Councilmember Peterson was right in terms of if the findings or fact are met, then we should forward, and I agree with that. Where I disagree is the findings of fact being met. When I looked at the findings of fact, there's flaws in each of those. I know staff thinks that they are, but I think it's important to outline as we're deciding this, why they're not. So when we talk about the health, safety, general welfare, I'm not going to repeat what Councilmember Anderson just said, because it reflects exactly what my thought was, and I'm glad he used the word "risk," right? And there's no way that say that it, just because in the past there was no incidents, there will be in the future, because the future has significantly different conditions. The influence of alcohol, just think what the Heritage District was like before it got juiced up, right? It's very, very different. There's just no fact about it. You can just pull the police reports if you want to see the evidence. Okay? And I know that the conditions are different, but the fact things change, so to say that there's going to be no detrimental impact, you just can't say that with any certainty. Number two is that it conforms to the intent policies of the general plan. The general plan's intent is that commercial activity is in commercial areas. Now, I've been very vocal about small businesses, and I'm a champion of those that grow out of garages, and I think that's great, and I think the town does have some fairly decent protections when it comes to letting small businesses grow out of things, but at some point in time, they cross the line out of where their business is located in a residential area like this, and it's time for them to be located in an appropriate commercial area. And I think the growth and success of the Elegant Barn is a good thing, it's a positive thing, but I believe it has outgrown it, and so it doesn't meet this finding either. Or three, the proposed use conforms to the conditions, requirements, standards required by the zoning code and other applicable state, federal requirements. There's lots to be said on that, but I will just note on this, when it comes to serving alcohol, there's, there's laws in the state of Arizona like the 300-foot limit, right? And while that doesn't apply here technically, that's based on a principle that we value churches and schools and families more than commercial activity. Why? Because of the positive effect that they have in our society and preserving a civil society. So we have things like the 300-foot buffer. We have other things to protect the integrity of the family. That's something I've always been vocal on, and I think is very, very important. So when we, when we look at this and contemplate, does it meet that? To me, it doesn't pass that test. And there's other examples, but I'm going to skip those. The fourth is, the proposed use as condition would not unreasonably interfere with the use and enjoyment of nearby properties. How do we know that? I mean, we don't know that. When conditions are going to change, you just can't say it's going to meet it because you haven't tested it under those. I agree with the commitment, the agreement about the agreements, and I'm not going to restate that, but Mayor, I'm not going to be in support of that tonight, and I'm...
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I was on the Planning Commission in October of 2012 when this first came forward, and I had a certain memory from that evening that I repeated at the Planning Commission last month that was incorrect. I went back and watched the video, the whole entire meeting, and actually rewound and played again, and rewound and played again. Commissioner Whitman actually requested at the end of the meeting to pull the stipulation and to allow alcohol, but nobody else on the commission was willing to let that go forward. So it passed with a 4-2 vote, and I was one of the votes against the conditional use permit in October of 2012. But my last memory was that it was requested to allow the alcohol to go through, and that's what I've been remembering for the past six years, that I've repeated many times, so I wanted to correct that here. I can admit when I made a mistake. I said that evening on the dais that I would never agree to a wedding venue that didn't have alcohol, because I thought that was just detrimental to that type of business, but I also didn't find that it met the four findings of fact that have just been laid out by a couple of my fellow council members. I also looked up the fact that that is an arterial, which Councilmember Peterson just referred to. That part of Greenfield Road is a minor arterial. It doesn't change to a major arterial until Crossroads Park, Knox Road on Greenfield. So there's less traffic expected on that part of Greenfield Road than in the southern part of Greenfield Road. I felt that evening that it didn't meet the findings for, for a couple of different reasons. Again, like I just said, laid out by a couple of the commissioners here, and councilmembers here, and I still tonight cannot find that it meets those findings enough to go ahead and to allow the alcohol at this time. So I will also not be in favor of this. I will appeal the Planning Commission's decision.
Thank you. Councilmember Cook, do you wish to speak?
I'm going to make a quick comment.
Okay.
Thank you. I'll just make a brief comment. I worry, I've learned a lot since 2012. I hope, I hope I'm a lifelong learner, but I've definitely learned a lot sitting on this dais and participating in this public process over many, many years now, and I think that conditional use permits with as many stipulations and as many conditions as required in this one and also in the one that's being requested tonight make it so difficult for us to enforce as a council, and it makes it so difficult for us to ensure that those conditions are being met and that the stipulations are being met. And so, because of that and because of many things that I've learned over the last six years since 2012, I'm also not going to be supportive of the Planning Commission's decision. Actually, it was something that Adam Buck said, and Adam, I think this is the first case you've had before this council, so welcome to Gilbert, but you said something that they could have alcohol, and it would be really hard for anyone to know if they did that. That also means that if they had alcohol, it would be really difficult for anyone to know if all of those conditions and stipulations which they had included would be met. So because of that, and because I have concerns about the enforceability of the conditional use permit and those findings of fact that have been mentioned, I am not supporting this tonight. So with that, I will close the public hearing on this agenda item and entertain a motion.
Mayor, thank you. And I did review the, the motion here with legal. I know there'll be some discussion about the 2015 as well, but they said what I say as a motion is actually the right motion. So move to overrule the Planning Commission's approval of the conditional use permit UP18-07, UP12-05-C for the Elegant Barn on the ground set forth as the November 15th, 2012 Town Council meeting. Second.
That motion carries with a 6-1 vote. Thank you. Thank you again to all those who participated tonight. We appreciate you. We're moving now to our administrative items. Agenda item 30 is our motion.
Mayor, I, I did want to comment on it.
Please.
Thank you. This is a part of our procedure for updating our system development fees, which we're required to do every so often, and that deadline's coming up. So we have to do this as far as, if we're going to do any adjustments that include any of those fees increasing, even if on the net it's going to decrease, we still have to do this notice. And so, Mayor, I'm going to support the notice, but I want to, I want to comment that I am concerned. I've begun, begun studying, and there's more study to do. You all know how I love those numbers. And just some preliminary study and some reasoning and thought, I am concerned with some of the ways we're calculating, especially the new streets fee. Maybe, maybe I'll decide it's totally appropriate, but at this point, I have some concerns, and I just want to make that known. I think, yes, I support, I've said it before publicly, yeah, I know, I'm a builder who supports system development fees. I've always said growth should pay for growth, but I also have said that they shouldn't have to pay more than their share. It's only fair that we limit it to that. So, and I think that some of the ways we're doing things there do not quite meet that standard based on my preliminary review. So here's the fun thing for everyone on this council who gets tired of my long-winded discussions and all the data. I'm actually not going to be on this council for when this is adopted. So I don't know, though, you might hear from Citizen Victor in January. We'll just have to see how this goes. But anyway, I just wanted to make sure everyone knows that there are some things I think probably need some, some work, but that's normal this stage of the game. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
So, mode.
Second.
Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That moves us to agenda item 30A. I was the one who requested agenda item 30A to be put on this agenda, and I will explain my reasoning behind it and what I hope to accomplish tonight. After receiving many calls and having some concerns about special events being held on private property, my concern actually lies more in with our process than with the actual special event. And so, my goal, which I hope that we can accomplish tonight, is to actually remove the special event permit process for any special event being held on private property. We have laws already on the books. We have, we have, we have lots of information we can provide to anyone who is hosting a private, a, a, a special event on their private property, but I have some serious concerns about both our process and also the quantity of dollars and staff time being devoted to private property special events, so.
Mayor, am I hearing you correctly that there we, the, special events on private property would no longer need to be subjected to our review process?
Correct.
Holy Hannah. I am a very happy man. You are awesome. I'm with you.
Maybe I should have saved this for his last council meeting as a gift.
We'll vote January.
Yeah, no, actually, I want to vote tonight. There's, there's several reasons for it. I do, however, believe that many individuals who hold special events on their private property that are open to the public deserve some education about which laws will and will not be enforced. All laws currently on the books will be enforced by town staff, parking restrictions, noise ordinance, you name it, those will all be. And at this point, I frankly just think it would take a large burden off of town staff as well as, as well as the individuals who are hosting these events. That would also mean that those individual vendors will not need a business license in order to participate in those special events. So that's my goal tonight. I'm hoping...
I'm hoping that we can do that with simply direction to staff and a vote by the council. But yes, Councilmember A.
Mayor, I'm with you on this one. I would ask as part of it to have staff, after we, assuming this passes, that if they do run into unintended consequences, that they come back to us, then we can rectify those as needed. But I think it's a great idea, and I appreciate your leadership on this.
Thank you. I'm happy to make a motion. I'm also happy if somebody else wants to make the motion, but I'm, okay, I'll go for it. Okay. I usually don't make motions as the mayor, but I will tonight. All right. I move that we remove the special event permit process for special events being held on private property, but request that town staff also produce an educational and informational document to outline and educate the special event host, what types of codes and laws they may be subjected to as part of the laws and codes that are already on our books.
Second.
Can we just add to that to have them?
And to have...
Within a certain time to come back and give us any update that they have? Yeah, review of?
Yes, and if they would review by January? Is that okay, Robert? January? Your second covers that?
My second covers that, and I have like this Braveheart moment where I want to just yell freedom.
Please don't.
You know what I'm talking about?
All right. There's a motion and a second. Please. I'm just going to double-check our attorney that we're following the, he looks concerned, so.
Mayor members of council, I believe this, the item is advertised, discussion and direction to staff on evaluating and improving the process as opposed to ending it. It can certainly be where things end up eventually, direction, but I think the motion should follow the language of the item as advertised.
The motion was intended to be written that we had the opportunity to make the change, and that direction was given to staff. Okay, let me do this, then. To temporarily stop the receipt of application while the evaluation period is proceeding. So that from this point forward, they will not be required to submit or staff will not be required to evaluate special event permits.
But if they can't submit, and we also can't remove it, then they can't have a special event. Why don't we just direct staff to the next council meeting to review it, and then we'll go on to the next council meeting?
I think that's the best way to proceed.
Okay. All right. So moved.
Second.
Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. There goes your Braveheart moment. Maybe you spoke too soon. All right. That moves us to agenda item 31. Any comments or concerns about the tortoise habitat? Councilmember? Councilmember Anderson?
I think Councilmember Cook has...
Okay, Councilmember...
Let me give a quick review since I'm on the, the board lays onto the Parks and Recs. The Boy Scout troop 684 came to the Parks Board multiple times with this wonderful idea. They shared it with the commissioners on the board, and the, the board voted unanimously to move forward with this. Probably the most major concern of the habitat related to the protection of the tortoise. How would we ensure that, you know, that they wouldn't be, you know, stolen from the habitat? So I'm not sure we have actually addressed the safety and security of the, of the tortoises. So again, that was a major concern, and I'm not sure if staff actually has come up with a plan, that they've talked about cameras and so forth. The second issue that was brought up was related to the actual food source for the tortoises as to what's acceptable or not, and then if the town would have to continue on providing, you know, feeding of the tortoises and so forth. You know, after the project has been placed, and what type of plants or whatever would have to be used there. So those were kind of a couple of the major concerns related to that. But again, the board members approved of this unanimously. I ask staff that they be bringing this to the council meeting for, you know, your discussion or any of your concerns before we move forward with the project.
Councilmember Anderson?
Let me, let me say first off that I'm totally 100% supportive of Boy Scout projects out at the preserve. We've probably done over 100 of them over the last 10 years. And this, I'm very supportive of this project also. I'd like to see the scouts, I think they said there were like six Eagle projects that would be working on this, and that would be great to build the, the enclosure for the tortoise. I'd like to separate out the issues, the one of the enclosure itself, which I think is a great idea for the preserve, and as Councilmember Cook pointed out, the issue with the tortoise. And I'm a little bit concerned about the tortoise, and I see our naturalist Jenny Rambo is in the, the audience. I'd like to ask her a few questions if I could to kind of clarify, Mayor, the, our consideration of allowing a tortoise to be in that enclosure full-time or some other alternatives. So if, Jenny, if you could come forward and I wanted to ask her a few questions, and she is, she's our, she's our wildlife management expert in the town, and certainly this is Just a couple of questions, Jenny. First off, is, is the desert tortoise a protected species?
Yes, the state of Arizona lists the desert tortoise as a species of special concern.
And as such, does that mean that we have responsibility for the health and safety of that tortoise?
Yes, desert tortoises remain, or belong to the state of Arizona. So if the town did obtain a tortoise, it would become a tortoise custodian, and it would be responsible for the health and safety of the animal.
And I know there's a desire to have a tortoise full-time in the enclosure. Could you explain the behavior of a typical desert tortoise and what that may mean in that enclosure for the visiting public? It's important, I think, that we be able to talk about using this enclosure as an education tool, but what would be the behavior of the tortoise, and that may, that may affect our ability to do a program of some kind there?
Desert tortoises hibernate for about six months of the year, from about October to April. And during the late spring to early fall, when the tortoise is active, it will emerge from its burrow typically a couple of hours in the morning and possibly again at dusk. The tortoise does spend most of its life underground. And I did speak with one of my colleagues who's the interpretive ranger at Usary Mountain Park, and he said that their tortoise is visible for scheduled programs during the summer about half of the time.
What would be, we have a habitat there that's, that's unique, and that's certainly part of our mission is to protect that habitat. What would be the interaction of, if any, of the tortoise with, with other wildlife in the area?
Well, the tortoise would not affect other wildlife in the preserve. There are, however, potential interactions that may be a concern for the tortoise in the riparian preserve. Coyotes and ravens, both of which occur in the riparian preserve, are predators of tortoises that have not yet achieved full size. The riparian preserve also has a healthy population of desert cotton tails, which you would expect for a riparian environment. And because of that, the cultivated plants in the preserve have to be protected from the rabbits by cages, because the rabbits jump easily over the three-foot fences we put around the gardens. The reason this would be a concern is because a desert tortoise's health depends on a diet of high-fiber native plants that have the proper nutrient ratios for the tortoise's health. Grocery store produce can be fed to the tortoises, but it can only be really a supplement.
And I'm assuming that if we, we place a tortoise full-time in that enclosure, we'd have to adopt it from somewhere, probably game and fish. Do they have specific requirements for the tortoise?
Yes, game and fish regulates desert tortoises, and they have a lot of tortoises that need homes, and there is a need to educate people about how they can become responsible tortoise custodians. They do have a number of requirements for the privilege of becoming a tortoise custodian to properly care for the tortoise. And I did speak with the supervisor of the tortoise adoption program at Arizona Game and Fish Department. So she listened to a description of our project. She said that they would be unlikely to approve tortoise adoption for the riparian preserve and cited mostly a couple of concerns. One is that a two-to-three-foot high enclosure wall would not be regarded as adequate to prevent other animals from entering the tortoise's enclosure or prevent the tortoise from digging underneath the enclosure and escaping where it could encounter hazards in the preserve, such as water features. The other concern she expressed is the absence of a perimeter fence around the enclosure with a locking gate to prevent public entry into the tortoise enclosure, especially at night.
One final question. Have other municipalities done anything similar to this?
Yes, there are a number of desert tortoise exhibits. Most of them are in desert preserves, mountain preserves, and I did speak with a couple of them. My colleague at Usary Mountain Park, which is a desert preserve and a county park, they have had a live tortoise exhibit for over a year, and they have had no issues with tortoise theft or vandalism. I also spoke with staff at Chandler Veterans Oasis, and they have a live tortoise exhibit. They're in an urban area, similar to the environment surrounding the riparian preserve. And Chandler's exhibit has a concrete wall with iron bars that are creating a fence around it. Chandler staff did report that, that tortoises were stolen out of their enclosure. So those were the two that I, I spoke to.
Okay. Thank you. The reason that, that I wanted to go through all of that is, is like I said, I'm 100% supportive of the scout project and building an enclosure. It's placing a tortoise in there full-time that I have a problem with. We could put a tortoise in to fulfill our obligation that we have at the preserve to educate the public. It'd be a perfect venue to put a tortoise in there temporarily and have a program that explains to the public how they can adopt a tortoise and what it would take to adopt a tortoise. It's an ideal situation for that, but I think it would be, it wouldn't be as clear a great project, I think, for the town if we put a tortoise in there full-time and it got stolen. That would not...
Will the tortoise in its off-hours be stored at the Anderson home?
Yeah, there's already one there.
That's, that's why I suggested it, actually.
Yeah. We could. I, I think Jennifer had a presentation too, Jennifer Loria, about this that, that might have some more bearing on, on the enclosure and what is proposed.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. We do have a couple of the scouts that were involved in this project. Did you want me to go through my presentation, or did you just want to ask me any questions?
I think the presentation would be fine.
Okay.
I'd like to meet the scouts, too, if that's okay, when the time is appropriate. I'm not seeing it on the...
Just some background information. Brendan Voorhees, whose father is here today, he's sick unfortunately, approached the town several months ago with this idea to bring a tortoise habitat to the riparian. He researched similar habitats at San Tan Regional Park, Usary, Veterans Oasis, as Jenny indicated. But their vision for this habitat was a live educational exhibit for the whole family, a fun gathering space for programs and community, a way to educate and teach children and families about reptiles, and also to create a new experience and an area of interest to attract new visitors, their regular visitors to the riparian, and just thought it would be something new and exciting to do. As Councilmember Cook indicated, we did present to the Parks Board, which was approved. They asked us to come back with some additional information. So these are some of the areas that staff covered with our presentation to the Parks Board. Location, project management, the care, staff and community involvement, as well as programming and budget concerns. The habitat location that was being considered was actually right outside of the Southeast Regional Library, which is outside of the, the children's space area, right there. We chose that location because of the proximity to existing irrigation lines to help with water for the tortoise, as well as an area that'll be sustainable for the future, also an area that's a little bit more visible and closer to the parking area. In terms of project management, the timeline of the project would be about three to four months. The department would take the lead on the project management in terms of all the different areas, working with our maintenance staff with installing irrigation lines, building the walls, working with the naturalists in terms of selecting the right types of plants to be in the habitat. In terms of tortoise care, one of the ideas that we proposed was a six-to-12-month trial period with a live tortoise in the exhibit to see how it goes, and hopefully we don't run into any issues with the tortoise habitat being vandalized or getting stolen in terms of security, tapping into the Southeast Regional Library surveillance system to hopefully deter people from stealing a tortoise or harming the tortoise. In case of illness or injury, the Parks Recreation Foundation was in support of this with their veterinarian on their Parks Board that would help with any sort of illness or injury that could possibly happen to the tortoise. Feeding and monitoring would be something that staff would take control of. So staff involvement, existing staff, including park rangers, the naturalist, program coordinator, our rec leaders, and other staff that we have at the Southeast Regional Library and Riparian Preserve would absorb the tortoise needs, feeding, monitoring, and the care and maintenance for the tortoise. And then community involvement, as I indicated, the foundation is willing to support this habitat financially if needed or upon request. Another idea that was discussed was to make this an adopt a habitat experience where groups could adopt the habitat, take ownership, help with monitoring, feeding, and care of the tortoise as well. This also, as Jenny indicated too, would provide programming opportunities for tortoise care, which is big in Arizona. It's an opportunity for our park rangers to conduct informational and educational demonstrations, and also an opportunity to invite other organizations such as Arizona Game and Fish and Phoenix Herpetological Society to host sessions as well. Game and Fish and Phoenix Herpetological Society to host sessions as well. So this was our estimated budget, which at this time could be absorbed within our current programming budget at the Riparian. Anticipated veterinarian costs if needed, supplemental food costs, because they will need supplemental food other than what's in the habitat, and restoring the plants and materials within the habitat. And so the ask was to approve the department in proceeding with the proposed Eagle Scout project of building the habitat. And we have, if two of the Scouts want to come on up?
Yes, please come to the podium. You guys have been patient.
And as Councilmember Anderson indicated, this project would include six separate Eagle Scout projects, so really a great community project.
There's your mic, right up there. Thank you for being patient. You guys should get your citizenship in the community and your Eagle Scout project done tonight, right?
Thank you.
You guys have done a lot. Tell us your names.
My name is Kayden Engel.
And I'm Orlando Rojas.
Thank you. And as a mom who has one boy working on his Eagle Scout project right now, I just want to congratulate you guys for thinking outside of the box, literally, because you're thinking about a tortoise habitat, not in a box. That's really amazing. And I'm grateful for the work that you guys are doing and what you're willing to do for the town that you live in and love. Glad you love the Riparian. I heard a couple concerns just about safety of the tortoise, which I know would be at the forefront of your mind. So can I make a suggestion as we move forward with this item? And that is that you work directly with Councilmember Anderson, and Councilmember Anderson will also find the right resources to assist you. He already found one, and the genius that's Jenny over there, not this Jen, but that one. We're grateful for you. And Scott, if you wouldn't mind working with them to ensure that whatever project they do end up doing becomes something that keeps the tortoise safe. You obviously know a lot about tortoises and habitats and food and all sorts of things.
And like I said, I'm 100% supportive of what they're doing in building the enclosure. It's the tortoise itself I'm concerned about, and between myself, I think, and the naturalist, we can probably work that out.
Hey, I like that idea. Are you guys okay with that?
Yes.
Mayor, just on a personal note, Kayden is my sister-in-law's nephew, and I know technically doesn't make him my nephew, but I sure am proud of him and the rest of their family, great people, and thank you for participating in the community and contributing this way.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
All right. Are there any further questions from Council at this time? Sounds like we have a plan moving forward. Great. Councilmember Anderson, would you like to make the motion?
Sure. I would move that we proceed with the creation of the tortoise enclosure at the Riparian Preserve, and do further study involving the naturalists and myself on the actual amount of time and requirements to have a tortoise in that habitat, whether it's part-time or full-time.
Do we have a second? Thank you. Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Congratulations. 7-0 votes were kind of rare tonight, so hope you guys saw that. That was awesome. You guys want a picture of that 7-0 vote? Let's leave it up there for a minute. Yeah, I was going to say, you have to compile that big manual at the end. He just reset us. So let's try it again. I was going to make a joke about a tortoise over there, but... All right. Did you get it? All right. Good. We're here to serve. All right. That moves us to Agenda Item 32.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for this opportunity. John Kennedy, your Parks and Recreation Manager. So this item is the rebranding and the renaming of the sports facility located at Elliott District Park, something our team is extremely excited about. So very exciting opportunity and project for us to reopen this facility. We've worked with various sports marketing groups to help us come up with a new branding, style, colors, name, with the recommendation in front of you tonight being the name Cactus Yards. So it's a, obviously, the term cactus has a great meaning here with the cactus league for spring training, obviously, the Southwest tie into it, yards being a very common and popular baseball term. And so the team is very excited about the recommendation that we are bringing forward to you tonight. I can go through some other slides if you'd like to see some other opportunities, or I can take questions.
I want to see the one that says Gilbert, Arizona on it, because that's my favorite. Yep, I like that one, because I like the branding of Gilbert. I know that you'll use both, but I, that's my favorite. Councilmember Cook?
Well, the great part about this is that I agree with you, because that was a comment that I mentioned, was that any time there's an opportunity to put the word Gilbert on any of our branding, I think it was important, only because I didn't want to get confused with, you know, the yard coming in our downtown and so forth. But again, I thought it was a fantastic concept and a great idea to do this.
Great. Is there a motion?
I move to approve as presented by staff.
Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Do you want a picture of your 7-0 vote?
That's okay. Thank you.
We do. If you're not having fun, you're doing it wrong, so we're good. All right. Boards, Commissions, and Committee reports from Council?
Mayor, Mayor, Mayor. Catherine Lord Bear sent you all an email today with a general plan update. There's been some additions made to our general plan website. If you would like to visit it, there's also a brief survey for people to participate in and an interactive online map. So we'd love to have everybody's feedback for our general plan that we've just kicked off the update to.
Thank you. That's terrific. Any others from Council? I have two to add. Oh, go ahead. Okay. I have two to add. I would like to create two Council subcommittees. I gave our town manager a heads-up this week that this is something that I'm interested in pursuing with the support of Council, obviously, since I can't have Council subcommittees without Council's support. The first Council Subcommittee would be specific to building codes and would have the task really of both refining and clarifying Town of Gilbert-specific building codes. The last time we did a building code adoption was based on the 2012 codes, and I believe that it is a good time for us to make adjustments to those building codes to be more Gilbert-specific. So if, that's the first Subcommittee that I'd like us to create as a Council. The second Subcommittee of the Council that I would like us to create is based on the Land Development Code. And you guys have probably heard me talk about this in public meetings in the past, but just that Land Development Code over many years has grown, and it's natural for that to happen, but it's our responsibility as leaders to check that and to keep it in check. And we've come to a position, I think, in our growth, that it's time for us to take a good, hard look at the Land Development Code, both the length and the quantity of codes. There are some duplications in there that I'm happy to point out, but I think it goes much deeper even than that. And a conversation with our Development Services Director and that team, who oftentimes has to, on a very daily basis, refer to those Land Development Codes. There are, you cannot create a code for every single issue that will come to the town. So my philosophy is really, let's empower town staff to make the right call for the town, treat all fairly, and to ensure that we don't have unenforceable and a Land Development Code that is really impossible for us to translate and to understand. So those are the two subcommittees. I have a suggestion on how we do that. For building codes, I would like to request Councilmember Peterson, Councilmember Anderson, and Councilmember Taylor to focus on building codes. I understand that this will be probably about a six-month-long process, at least for our internal review. I understand that you'll be here as long as you can, and that at that point, we'll transition with Councilmember-elect Rigler. And once that six-month internal process has been completed, that we will take that out to the public, get stakeholder and public input on that. And so that leaves the other three of you for Land Development Code Subcommittee of the Council, and you three, you three and you three. And I, at this time, will not be in the subcommittees, but obviously will be there in a supportive role. And Valerie is also there to support. So with that, I don't think we need a motion to create subcommittees. We've done this in the past. But we will, if it's okay with Council, I'm looking for head nods. Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, great idea. Happy to support. Do you anticipate, I know staff will be supporting their, us and staff initially, and then go out for peer review type model?
Correct. Yeah, but recognizing all that staff has on their plate, I would like us to make it a six-month-type process rather than a quick, fast process, so that we can methodically go through this, but also so that we're not overburdening staff with the quantity of work.
April, report back some?
Yeah, I think that's about right, is to report back to subcommittees in April. But then, after that, we would go out to the public. Okay? Everybody's amenable? Heads nodding? High fives? Awesome. Okay, thank you. After Subcommittee's, future meetings, a report from our town manager on current events?
Mayor, members of the Council, just one question relative to our new tortoise habitat. I was wondering, why did the tortoise cross the road?
No.
To get to the Shell Station?
Did you look that up while you were sitting there?
I did. I did. I'm not that good with jokes.
Just for that, you have to go out there personally and help them build that.
Yeah, you're now in charge of babysitting the tortoise.
To deflect this away from me, I would like to point out that our town attorney is not wearing purple tonight for domestic violence awareness.
Patrick, the real reason was to avoid a tax increase, but anyway.
Excuse me, but are you, oh, you have your purple ribbon on. Okay.
Congratulations.
But you have a purple tie, because I bought you a purple tie.
I did, I did let Patrick, I did let Patrick know that he had to wear purple. Staff did cover for him by giving him the ribbon, so I did appreciate that.
I covered for Victor. I gave him the ribbon out of my drawer, so teamwork. All right. Any other questions or report from the town manager? That was it? That was your big night. Report from Council on current events. Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I Run for Good is next Saturday, and there is still room for you to run, all of you. So please sign up. It all goes to a great cause. What formerly was known as Chandler Christian Community Center, a lot of people may still know that name better, but is now Ascend, is the beneficiary of the event. So every single penny that we don't have to spend on things that weren't donated goes to them. And since we're run fully by volunteers, that means pretty much all of it's going there. So please come and participate. We just want you to come out and enjoy the beautiful weather. Yes, there's going to be some competition, and yes, there's going to be awards and prizes, and we're going to have a lot of fun. So it is next Saturday. The website is irunforgood.org. And so, anyway, we really appreciate everyone's support.
Councilmember Cook?
Thank you. This Saturday, the Gilbert Parks Foundation is having their Second Annual Night in the Park fundraiser. So that's going to be held right out here. It's a nice luau. You're going to go? Oh, thank you. So, and you can wear, you know, your Hawaiian shirt. And Patrick, if you want to wear a Hawaiian shirt and come, that would be really nice of you.
I gave my last one to Goodwill.
But anyways, I just let everyone know that everyone's welcome. The monies that are raised for the Foundation is obviously used for special needs for the parks and boards, or Parks and Recs. So again, this Saturday, Second Annual Luau.
Thank you. Any other report from Council? And I have no additional report to add tonight, so thank you for your participation, and this meeting is adjourned.